Hello, good evening. Call this meeting to order at 7:08? Is that what that says? My eyes are so bad. Yes, 7:08 PM. So glad to have everyone here. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and we are going to have it be led by our superintendent for a few more days, Dr. Buonrostro. So officially, we want to welcome Dr. Alexis Burrell to the Executive Cabinet as our Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. We love you. And as I've just mentioned, deep sigh, collective sigh, this is our final meeting with Dr. Buonrostro as our superintendent. So we will have Ms. Dahlia Gadomala taking over at our next board meeting. And also, I will mention this at the end, but since we usually have a lot less folks at the end, I want to remind you that we do not have a July board meeting. So we are going dark in July. We will be back August 5th, I believe it is, for our next board meeting. So that being said, we will be reporting out our closed-session action, which tonight we had 22 positions to interview. So it's been a great night, very exciting things happening at the district that we're very excited about. So Mr. Gonzalez, please read out for us.
Thank you, President Nicola. It is my pleasure to do so. In closed session, the board did take action on 22 appointments, so excited to announce these. In closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Merchant and seconded by Mrs. Ibarra that the board approve the certificated management employment of Tracy Taylor to Assistant Principal Wilson Elementary School with an effective date to be determined. The motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Nicola and seconded by Mrs. Ibarra that the board approve the certificated management employment of Patty Ibarra to Assistant Principal Corona High School, effective date to be determined, and the motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Ibarra and seconded by Mr. Rahaga that the board approve the certificated management employment of Jasmine Nolt to Assistant Principal River Heights Intermediate School, effective date to be determined, and the motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Ibarra and seconded by Mrs. Merchant that the board approve the certificated management employment of Tricia Aspergen Jenkins to Coordinator Education Services, effective date to be determined, and the motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mr. Rahaga and seconded by Mrs. Curdi Mesa that the board approve the certificated management reclassification of Pam Snow to Principal Vander Mullen Elementary School with the effective date of July 1st, 2025, and the motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mr. Rahaga and seconded by Mrs. Nicola that the board approve the certificated management reclassification of Erin Shires to Coordinator in Human Resources, effective date of July 1st, 2025, and the motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Curdi Mesa and seconded by Mrs. Merchant that the board approve the certificated management reclassification of Deana Rodriguez to Principal Pollard High School, effective July 1st, 2025, and the motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Nicola and seconded by Mrs. Merchant that the board approve the certificated management reclassification of Shannon Juniper to Assistant Principal Norco High School, effective July 1st, 2025, and the motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Merchant and seconded by Mr. Rahaga that the board approve the certificated management reclassification of Karen DeBerry to Principal Elserito Middle School, effective July 1st, 2025, and the motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Nicola and seconded by Mrs. Merchant that the board approve the certificated management reclassification of Yvonne Traheal Wolf to Assistant Principal Santiago High School with the effective date of July 1st, 2025, and the motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Nicola and seconded by Mr. Rahaga that the board approve the certificated management reclassification of Matt Avalos to Assistant Principal Norco Intermediate School, effective July 1st, 2025, and the motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Nicola and seconded by Mr. Rahaga that the board approve the certificated management reclassification of Patria Gonzalez to Administrative Director for Special Education, effective July 1st, 2025, and the motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Nicola and seconded by Mr. Rahaga that the board approve the certificated management reclassification of Brian Leedy to Principal Chavez Academy, effective July 1st, 2025, and the motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Ibarra and seconded by Mrs. Nicola that the board approve the certificated management reclassification of Andy Roberts to Principal Kennedy High School, effective July 1st, 2025, and the motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Merchant and seconded by Mrs. Curdi Mesa that the board approve the certificated management reclassification of Lisa Tarter to Assistant Principal Orange Elementary School, effective July 1st, 2025, and the motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Curdi Mesa and seconded by Mrs. Nicola that the board approve the certificated management reclassification of Grace Wilson to Assistant Principal Riverview Elementary School, effective July 1st, 2025, and the motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Merchant and seconded by Mrs. Ibarra that the board approve the certificated management reclassification of Alicia Pike Green to Assistant Principal Centennial High School, effective July 1st, 2025, and the motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Ibarra and seconded by Mr. Rahaga that the board approve the certificated management reclassification of Rebecca Weston to Dean of Norco Intermediate, effective July 1st, 2025, and the motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Ibarra and seconded by Mrs. Merchant that the board approve the classified management reclassification of Patty Sanchez to Administrative Director Business Services, effective date to be determined, and the motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Nicola and seconded by Mr. Rahaga that the board approve the classified management reclassification of Sabrina Casper to Administrative Director Business Services, effective date to be determined, and the motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Ibarra and seconded by Mr. Rahaga that the board approve the classified management reclassification of Tanya Sanchez to Manager Business Services, effective date of 6/18/2025, and the motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Ibarra and seconded by Mrs. Nicola that the board approve the classified management reclassification of Miguel Velasquez to Director 1 Business Services with the effective date of 6/18/2025, and the motion carried unanimously. So those were the actions taken this evening. There also were some actions taken at the last board meeting, and we'd like to introduce those appointments today in the open session. The first, Dr. Alexis Burrell is our new Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Support. Congratulations, Dr. Burrell.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Board, and thank you, Executive Cabinet, for giving me this opportunity. I'm truly honored. And I'd just like to introduce a few people in the back, my crew in the back. If you guys could stand up. That's them. That's them. So we have my husband, my best friend, Tony. We have the twins who just finished Auburn Dale and are going to Centennial, finished dual immersion, and then we have Auntie Alisa down there at the end, and then my brother-in-law, Brian, Hudson, Charlie, and they're going to Lincoln Fundamental. And then Kayla, who's in dual immersion, that's grandbaby number one. She's in dual immersion at Garrettson. And then my daughter-in-law, who's amazing, Emily. And then my pride and joy, Elijah, he's running around, so. Oh, and my sister's on FaceTime. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Dr. Burrell rolls deep.
Right on. All right.
We have also-
Dr. Burrell, would you like a picture with your family and your people? Let's do it. Bring them on up. So Glenn, Mr. Rahaga was just bringing to my attention that at the next meeting with our 22 new friends, that it's going to be an interesting packed house.
Yes, we can do some logistics.
Yes, it's going to take some logistics planning, right?
We got you. All right.
Yeah, one plus one. Well, you know what we could do? It could be a parade. A parade. They could like parade through, like a conga line parade. Anyway.
We got you. We will figure that out. All right. We also had, at the last meeting, our new Assistant Superintendent and CBO of Business Services, Melissa Elwood. I know she's here. She's in the hall. There she is. There she is.
Have we not kicked Dahlia out of her seat yet?
No.
No. Okay. When do we do that?
Next meeting.
July?
Next meeting.
Okay. Next meeting. Okay. All right. Well, she's keeping it warm for you, Melissa. We're excited to have you.
We also had an appointment made to the principalship at Norco High School. Very excited to introduce Dr. Kat Wallace.
Thank you, Board. Thank you, Executive Cabinet. Couldn't be more thrilled to be back in blue. Super excited to represent Norco High School tonight. And what better way to start off with celebrating some athletes tonight? So I have my family here tonight. I have my beautiful mom, Anita, my godmother, Yolanda, my niece, Olive, and my sister-in-law, Amy. And my number-one cheerleader is at All-Star Practice tonight. They have a big tournament that they're preparing for, but she's super excited and proud to be back in blue, too. So looking forward to seeing you guys around. Thank you.
Well, Kat, I think it's very appropriate that tonight we're honoring the legendary Norco High girls softball team, which we know Tori is going to be a part of in just a few years. So congratulations.
All right. And also, we have a new principal that was appointed to Riverview Elementary, the small but mighty Riverview, and that is Dr. Kristy Martinez.
Hello, everybody. Thank you so much to our Executive Cabinet and school board members. I am so honored to be named as Principal of Riverview, and I just thank you so much. I would like to introduce my family. If everybody could stand up, please. I did bring a crew. I just wasn't sitting next to them. My mom and dad, Roman and Virginia, they traveled in from Tucson to be here. My sister Diana surprised me. She showed up a little while ago. My two daughters are here. Ava is a junior now at Roosevelt High School. Liliana is a sophomore at University of Arizona. And my rock, my husband, there's Roy. Thank you for being here, babe. And I also want to, Amy, please, my friend and my principal for four years at Wilson, Amy Johnson. Thank you.
I know, Dr. Burrell, you rolled deep, but Dr. Martinez, they crossed state lines. All right. So. And last, but I, we do have another appointment from last time. The Coordinator of Educational Services, Sbed, that went to Lori Clayes. She couldn't be here this evening, but we did want to recognize her as taking on that new position in Educational Services.
Thank you, Glenn. All right. We have been busy. Exciting things coming. All right. Let's move on to adopting the minutes from the May 20th meeting, the regular business meeting. Do I have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Chris. Everyone, let's vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, now we will move on to the best part of the program where we get to acknowledge our amazing scholars, starting with Dr. Goines. Tell us about our Science and Engineering Fair participants.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to call four phenomenal scientists, students, up to the front with their Assistant Principal. Would Ava George, Rayanne Kalik, Trevon Nguyen, and Dylan Patel come on up? We can give them a hand? So these phenomenal students are a part of the International, the International Science and Engineering Fair. I'm proud to introduce some remarkable students who recently represented our district. Then 2025 Regeneron National Science and Engineering Fair, ISF, that was held in Columbus, Ohio, May 10th through 16th. Nearly 1,700 high school student finalists from over 60 countries, regions, and territories competed at this prestigious event. And we are proud to recognize these four outstanding students, all from Centennial High School. You have Dylan Patel, Rayanne Kalik, and Trevon Nguyen. These are all, they were sophomores, going to be juniors, and they were finalists in Translational Medicine Science category. Their project is titled "Combining Accessibility with Machine Learning: Utilizing Machine Learning to Create a User-Friendly Medical Application to Process and Detect Histopathicological Images of Oral Sucumwas Cell Carcinoma." And that aims to improve early cancer detection through accessible AI-powered tools. And then we have Ava George, also going to be a junior sophomore at the time, was a finalist in Robotics and Intelligent Machines category. Her project, "A Novel Approach to Fall Prediction and Prevention: Integrating Machine Learning and IOT for Elderly Safety: Focus on Enhancing Safeties and Independence for Older Adults Through Smart Technology." They are joined here by their proud Assistant Principal, Dr. Burrell. Can we please give these amazing students a hand?
She wins everything. It's Ava George, the Rondawas. Ava George, the Rondawas. So, good for you. Congratulations.
I think it's really good when the Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Goines, struggles with pronouncing your projects. So, I think that speaks volumes. All right, next up, Dr. Goines. Good luck with this one. Let's see how you do.
I'm not sure I'm going to do much better on this one. But if we could please bring Sophia Lai, a current sixth grade at Rondo, up to the mic with her Assistant Principal, Eileen Wonderlick. Come on down. Nice hand for Sophia. So, I would also like to recognize an exceptional young scientist from our district who competed in the 2025 California Science Engineering Fair. That was held on April 12th through 13th at California Lutheran University in Thousand Oaks. Sophia Lai here, a current sixth grade student at Rondo School of Discovery, earned second place in the Material Science category for her project titled, "What Type of Paper Is the Most Soundproof and Does Shape Matter?" Her work explored how material type and structures influence soundproofing and effectiveness. We would like to honor her, along with her amazing Assistant Principal, and just tell her how proud we are of her work.
Do we have Coach Cabrera, Mr. Cabrera here from Norco High School, representing athletics at Norco High?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, fellow CNUSD Board members, Superintendent Bonrostro, and Executive Cabinet. Thank you for having us here tonight. It's my honor to introduce our CIF champions. We had one CIF champion in track and field this year, and it was Kaylee Best. Kaylee Best, Division II champion in triple jump. Just to qu- a little history, you can clap for her there, yeah. Haley's also a three-time CIF champion. She's also won it in previous years in triple jump and long jump. So, also competed in Masters and State this year, two-time State participant, so going to go on to Vanguard. So, really introduce her head coach, Coach Lockett right here, assistant coach, Coach Kirkland, and her jumping coach, Coach Atticall right here. So, Coach Wade, really quick.
Thank you. Hey, thank you. How you guys doing today? I want to give a shout-out to the Board, giving us recognition on this award that we're receiving today, especially for this young lady, Kaylee Best. She's an amazing young lady, good grades, good character, and I wish her the best. Only reason I came back is for her, because I'm retiring. So, I'm done with track and field at Norco High School. I'm going out with a champ. And oh, yeah, I got my young lady, Tenet Scareback. Get up here. Get up here. Come on. Yeah, she's- come on. Get up here. She was part- she was the one that discovered Kaylee Best. So, this is our family. This is our family at Norco High School. So, they say we are Norco. This is what we talking about, family is right here. So, thank you, and Kaylee Best, you're the best.
And Masters Champion. Technically, Masters Champion.
Okay, let's go line up your pictures. Pictures.
What they didn't tell you is technically she is the Masters Champion in both events as well.
Okay, ready, one, two, and.
Appreciate it. One more thing I want to say. We are-
Norco!
We are-
Norco!
Thank you. That looked good.
Thank you, Coach Wade. Excellent. All right, we're sticking with Norco High School, which I couldn't be happier. So, let's hear some more. Cabrera.
All right, our second group I'd like to introduce would be our CIF Division I champion softball team. These ladies, not only a Division I champion, which in softball in the world, like open division, also were named State Champion last week. So, this is the seventh CIF championship in the history of the school and the third State Championship. So, a testament to the girls and Coach Robinson and his staff. So, I'll let Coach Robinson come on up here. Go, Coach.
Thank you. This team was so much fun to coach. They were, they are the epitome of team. They're basically a family. They made it, after a couple tough years, so much fun to want to be part of the, you know, the coaching again and everything else. And they were great all throughout the season, but even better to come playoff time. So, I can't say enough just what a great team they were this year.
Hold on, I want to say, all the parents, you guys get a shot? You get a shot?
Thank you, not yet. One, two, and, three. Thank you.
We could bust out another "We are Norco," but we'll spare you. It's okay. All right, so next up, we have Santiago High School, and Steve Mitchell coming to the podium.
Good evening. On behalf of Dr. Tori's, our principal, I'm Steve Mitchell, proud athletic director. I want to thank President Nicola and the entire Board, as well as Dr. B. and our fantastic Executive Cabinet for taking the time to honor our champions throughout the entire district. It's always a proud time for Santiago to be up here, and it's no different than spring as we have, we actually, the five girls you're honoring tonight, and Riley Blade couldn't be here with us, we told her that she's so good, she's going to run from Sacramento from the state meetings, she's still on her way here. But we got the other four here, and we're so proud whether the, what they, these girls have done over the last two years in both cross-country and track have really put Santiago as well as CNUSD on not only a state map, but the national map. And I'm going to allow our legendary coach, Etheridge, to be able to speak. He's going to keep the details brief, but he's going to give some details that only Coach E. can give us. So, Coach E.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Thank you so much for honoring this group. This is a very special group. They're all juniors, they'll all be coming back, which is lovely. But to be State Champions, to be the top in the state of California, as you know, it's not easy. It's not an easy thing. And just watching the race, if you guys ever get the opportunity to YouTube the 4x8 at the State Championships, it's such an exciting race. Each girl did their job. Taylor Davis on first leg, she, you know, kept the team in contention close. Nicole Sampson on second leg, she, you know, brought us up into the top two. And then Kinsley Wickovich on third leg, just, it was a phenomenal performance, what she did, bringing us all the way up to first place and passing the baton to Braylon Combe in first. And Braylon Combe, fresh off of being the State Champion in the mile, running 435 in the mile earlier in the day, which was the number-two time in the state history, 435. Yes, it's phenomenal. She did work on that anchor leg, and she led her team to the state title, running her fastest split ever, 207 in the 800. It was a phenomenal performance. And, you know, I don't want to be remiss to also include Braylon Combe being the CIF Champion in the mile and the 800 for the second year in a row. So, that is a feat that's not easily done as well. So, I don't want to overlook that. I mean, she did that in CIF on her way to becoming the State Champion in the mile and then assisting the girls in the 4x8. So, what an amazing accomplishment. These five girls together, these four plus Riley Blade, finished second place as a team in the state of California. That's phenomenal. Five girls. And one last phenomenal note that I want to bring up to you guys, because this is, it's historical, it has to be mentioned. But we have a girl on this team, Kinsley Wickovich, who was a State Champion in cross-country on, as a part of our State Championship team. She was a part of the State Champion Soccer Team, and I believe she's the only athlete in Corona Norco Unified School District to be a three-time State Champion in three separate This is Kinsley right here. So, yeah, so we had some amazing things happen in the Corona Norco Unified School District, representing Santiago High School. Pleased to be here, and just thank you so much for this awesome recognition.
All right, thank you. All right. Ready, one, two, and.
Can the board members do pins-up? Do you know pins-up?
He's like, what is it? Yes, yes, it's awesome!
That's a keeper right there.
That's cute.
Thank you.
We like to try to be cool like that.
Okay, at this time, Dr. B. and I are going to take a little walk. So, I will begin, and then I will come back and take my seat, and I will turn it over to the Board to share their comments. So, I'm going to keep this very short and sweet, because I don't do well with these kind of things. This is our last, our last meeting with Dr. B., and, you know, I think it feels like it was just yesterday when Chris and I joined the Board, and him and I talked with Sam about, you know, what this job looked like and what we were going to do. And he told us that he had, you know, maybe about two or three more years that he wanted to stay with us. And Chris and I were not really counting, so we weren't really prepared for you to leave us. And I just want you to know how much we've appreciated your leadership, and even though we've only been with you about two and a half years, you know, your history and your legacy that you're leaving behind in this district goes far deeper than even your time here as Superintendent. You know, you've made an impact throughout the district in a lot of different ways. And I think that every person that's worked with you, that knows you, knows that you lead with heart, and you know that I do, too. And I think it's why we've gotten along so well and work so well together, because you're an incredible leader, you do everything for the right reasons. Your integrity is impeccable. I remember that was one of the things that you and I talked about when you told me what was most important for you to convey to your team and to the district and to families and community, is how much your integrity means to you. And I've never seen a second of wavering from that. And so, we so appreciate all that you do, and we know that you're not going to be far. We know that Sandy hopes you'll be far, and and we encourage her to take you far away, but you just have to come back and visit us every so often, because you're going to really, really be missed. And so, on behalf of the Board, which they all very much have minds and voices of their own, so they will share that, but I have the distinct pleasure of being the President when you're retiring, and so I get to say on behalf of the Board how much we appreciate you, we love you, and we will miss you, and we just wish you nothing but the best in your retirement. So, thank you.
If you don't mind, I'm just going to get this over with. The, I did write a few things down. Give me a second. I'd rather do it now, because things keep getting in my eyes, I don't know what it is. So, good evening. As I close out 39 amazing years in public education, 26 of them here, I want to begin to simply by saying how incredibly grateful I am. Thank you, Corona Norco, for an unforgettable journey filled with friendships, memories, and the incredible honor of serving this community I love. It has truly been one of the greatest honors of my life. Each day I came to work, I was grounded with one purpose, serving our students. Together, we faced challenges, found opportunities, and always kept focused on the hearts and minds of our future, which is our young people, our students. That sacred responsibility has been at the center of everything we've done as a district. To our Board of Education, thank you for your trust, your belief in my leadership, and for the friendships we've built along the way. I'm proud of all we have accomplished and excited to see CNUSD's future under the leadership of Ms. Dahlia Guaramala. To my Executive Cabinet, you are without question the most talented team in the state of California. I'm putting the pressure- the state of California. I'm putting the pressure on you, okay? Experts in your fields, passionate about your work, and deeply committed to CNUSD. That's what really sets this entire group, entire group apart. I also want to personally recognize each of our board members. Jamie, thank you for your passion, your resilience, and your enthusiasm you bring each and every day. We saw that close session today. Anna, thank you for your noble, your loyal and steady guidance that characterizes you, who you are. Chris, thank you for the principled, visionary, and sharp insights you bring to this district. Mary, thank you for your fearless, persuasive, and influential leadership. No one does it better than you. And Stacy, thank you for your compassion, your, how supportive you are, and your, analytical you are in your approach to leading this district. Each of you, more importantly, each of you leads with heart that has made the difference for our students and families here in this district. And of course, none of this would have been possible without the love of my wife Sandra and my three children that have dealt with the challenges of, of, of me. Yeah, the challenges of dealing with me and my career. This really has been, since day one, it's, it's been, I've been passionate since day one. So I'm forever grateful for them, to them, my children. But I also want to recognize, I know John Vandruska is not here tonight, but he's also retiring after. John, are you here? Oh, I didn't see you earlier. John, stand up. I want, I want to recognize you for your steady leadership. Your, your care for our students and for the programs that you led during your stay here with us. You've done just a fabulous job. You're just a stand-up guy. So thank you so much, John. I also want to thank the legendary, I'm going to use that word, Gina Boster. Gina, you can stand up, please. Dr. Boster's heart for children, dedication to CNUSD. I, I was doing the math this morning. I think it's about 53 years since you were a student and an employee here. And thank you for, for that passion that you brought in, the programs that you led along the way. So it's been a privilege. And as I move into my next chapter, I do so with immense pride. So if you see any some tears, it's, it's pride for the great work that has been done here and gratitude that I have for this incredible journey. Because honestly, it's, it's never really been a job for me. It's, it's something that I love doing. So with that, I say, thank you. Appreciate everyone. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sam, Sam, you need to stay there. Sorry, the, the rest of the board wants to, to share with you. And then maybe before we do that, we'll take a little moment since everybody was standing, let's have Sandy come up here with Sam. And I'd love the E-Cab to also come get up in the photo with him. So can you guys all come forward?
All right. Well, Sam, I enjoyed the time that we got to work together as a parent volunteer. You know, I've so, I've told you before, I always appreciated your support for PTA. I have enjoyed our short time, you know, and, and getting to work with you as a school board member. I want to say that I was very grateful for your leadership during COVID. You know, got to see your face a lot on Zoom, right when we were watching all those meetings from home. And, and you had my confidence when you became the superintendent. My youngest was going to be a senior in 2022. And I just want you to know as a parent that I was, I was very grateful and very relieved. I trusted your leadership, always trusted your leadership. And, and that's really, I'm, I'm not a person of a lot of words. Just know that I mean them deeply. I mean them sincerely. And I, I wish, I would, I just wish, I wish you the best in anything you choose to do after this. Thank you.
You have been an amazing leader. The way that you were just so calm through everything. It doesn't matter. Everybody can be getting a little worked up or a little razzled and you're like, what she meant to say was. It's an amazing leadership style. You have everybody's attention when you speak. And we know whatever you're saying is truly what is best for, for the, all the students, for us, for your, your, all your employees and everyone. And I've just never met a, a stronger leader than, than you. And it, also your community involvement. You really love our community. And so I know you're not going anywhere. And, well, you're going on vacation. It's just a short one. But we just, we know that you're a phone call away and I'm just so excited. This is what you've worked your entire life for, is for retirement. That's what everybody is. And so I guess where your future takes flight, you're landing now into paradise. So congratulations.
All right. I hate goodbye, so I'm going to read what ChatGPT came up with. And that's also, that's inside, inside a joke there, but Dr. Bueno Stro's career in education has been nothing short of extraordinary. From your early days as a classified to a coach, as a teacher, and then an administrator, you brought energy, heart, and a deep commitment to student success. Whether in the classroom or on the field, you poured yourself into shaping young lives, teaching not only academics or athletics, but character, resilience, and leadership. Over the years, Dr. Bueno Stro, you have risen through the ranks, moving from teacher to administrator and ultimately to superintendent. Each step of the way, you've remained grounded in the belief that every student matters and every staff member plays a role in building a thriving school community. Your leadership has left a lasting mark on our district. And under your guidance, thousands of students have found direction, purpose, and support. Your vision has helped move our schools forward while keeping people at the center of every decision. And that's so true. Because it doesn't, I mean, out of seven, we have 7,000 employees, but you go to school sites and you remember names and you remember stories and there's connection that you have with employees is, is amazing. That wasn't ChatGPT. Dr. B, your journey has inspired so many of us. Thank you for your years of service, your dedication, and your heart. You've made a difference that will echo for generations to come. And I'm honored to call you a friend. Congratulations and enjoy your well-deserved retirement. And I'm looking forward to hearing some stock tips after you retire. Thank you.
This is going to be hard. So I'm going to be spacing today. I've known Sam a long time. 10-plus years during PTA, 13 years as a school board member. And I remember the first time that I met Sam, we were in the kitchen at one of the churches because a student had been killed at Centennial High School. And I was the PTA council president. I was making coffee. I didn't know how to make coffee. He walked in, I go, do you know how to make coffee? And he's looking at me like, and, you know, I didn't know who he was. And so we started talking and then he told me that he was a principal. And I just, my heart broke because he, you know, he's the leader of this school and he just lost a student, you know? And ever since then, we've been friends. And you've been through a lot with my family, with my mom dying, my dad, my grandparents, and you always have been there for us, you and Sandy. It wasn't just, you're the boss, you're the superintendent, the deputy, whatever. You guys have truly been there for my family all the time. And I truly appreciate everything you have done. And I'm going to see you because I need avocados all the time. And I just, I'm going to miss you still, but I'm still going to bug you. So don't think you're off. And I just want to wish both of you guys the best. Because I know you guys are going to start your touring of all the soccer fields in the world. That's going to be fun. And, and I'll always remember you as Samuelito because in Spanish, you know, that's what we call the younger person. And since I'm older than you, I can still call you Samuelito. So congratulations on your retirement and best wishes. And like I wrote in a card somewhere, happy trails to you. Thank you, Sam. And Sandy.
And those of you that don't know, Mrs. Bueno Stro is a longtime CNUSD employee. Would you like to say a few words? You're good?
You know, I'll say this. I haven't said this publicly, but Sandy said some words at the Corona High School graduate, graduation. And I was so proud of her because it's not easy to get up in front of graduates, but Sandy will stand up and, and speak her mind. So I'm so proud of her for that. And she's, she, that's okay, babe. Then she, yeah. And she's a proud product of CNUSD.
We're not in any hurry, Sandy. You go for it.
Well, like Sam had mentioned, I did already say some words at Corona High. But one of the things that I left out, can I see your glasses? So as we were closing the year, you know, we're celebrating achievement, growth, and new beginnings. And it wasn't just for our graduates, but also Sam, who has been a remarkable leader in the community. And when he first started his career in education, he, because I've known Sam a really, really long time. So actually, we met when we were in our teens. But, so when he started his career in education, he always strove to be his best. He always did more than what was expected. And it was kind of hard to be around that level of intensity, to tell you the truth. And, but as we progressed through the school year and that first summer after we got married, I saw Summer Sam come back. And I was like, oh yeah, this is the guy I married. Because, you know, he'd loosen up and we'd have fun and we'd go places. And we'd enjoy working on projects in our house together. And then as life has it, you know, children came along, our careers, we supported each other. All of the commitments of life continued. Okay. And anyhow, Sam always, I don't know how he did it. He always balanced everything. And it was remarkable. But let me tell you, I don't think anyone will ever have an idea of how hard it is to be a superintendent. The level of intensity, the level of commitment, the work that's involved, the time that is involved, even if I probably told somebody about the schedule, they wouldn't believe it. Because it is, it is a very tough job. So I hope the public understands that everybody on executive committee, everybody on the board, the superintendent, you guys will always work more than you get leisure time. You know, that's just the way it is. So I hope they appreciate that. Because it does take a lot of time and commitment. And it, you know, it's been a great journey for Sam. And I'd seen him go through a lot of the ups and downs and the, the COVID was really tough. And like I said, it was clear to me that people did not understand what was involved in being superintendent. So as he steps into this new chapter, will, he'll be taking all the students that he helped all these years, thousands and thousands of students, all the employees, all his staff here, the board members. Well, he'll always remember all those times. And he led with integrity and compassion. Again, he became superintendent during a critical time in our lives and the world paused, but he went into overdrive. And there's been many obstacles that he turned into opportunities for learning and growing as a district. His leadership has left an imprint that will shape this district for years to come. And that's just not a catchy phrase you tell somebody when they're retiring. It's really something that was, he really strove and he worked hard for. And again, only a family will ever know the energy and the commitment it takes all the administrators and leaders here to do what they do for Corona Norco School District. The world is not always kind, but he always remained composed and kind. And that's something I'm very proud of. And I know all of you know what that's like as well. So I just want to, you know, I don't have one of those little cards to come up here and say anything, but I'm glad you gave me a platform to remind everybody to remember to be kind. That's all.
Wonderful job, Sam and Sandra. Got some big shoes to fill, Dahlia. Good thing you wear high heels. There's just different, different shoes. Okay, at this time, we are moving into our presentations to the board. And so first we will start with our LCAP. Dr. Goines will introduce.
Thank you, Madam President. As, as you know, we have a LCAP, Local Control Accountability Plan process in which we go through a process all year long to build a plan that, that our district can be proud of and how we support our students. So we have the very best in the state to do that. That is Dr. Capps here and Dr. Swelt. They really do a phenomenal job leading this process. And today, we're just to give you a little piece of that to talk about our local indicators. They're going to talk about what that means and present it to you tonight. Dr. Capps, Dr. Swelt.
Thank you. I didn't know we were going after that great presentation. But Sam, this is your last approvable LCAP that we're ringing forward, that, that, that you are here for. That is a tough act to follow. Thank you, President Nicola, Board of Education, Executive Cabinet. We're thrilled to be here. We here each year as we bring the LCAP forward for your consideration and approval. And I just, oh, it is going to move forward. Excellent. One of the legal requirements by state law is that we report the local indicators to the school board the same meeting as the LCAP is approved. And we know these measurements are incredibly important. The local indicators we've shared with you are state metrics, but the local measures are incredibly important as we improve continuously and get better. They give us an opportunity to look at family engagement, implementation of our standards, and see where we're at and what we're hearing from our community. So my partner in crime here, Dr. Swelt, and I are here to present to you those metrics. It's been about three years since we received concentration funding in our district and and we have reached the year where we are about at our, our, capping out on our dollars. We no longer have that, that differential increase as we've had for the past three years. So our goals are relatively the same as they have been before in our, our actions. As you know, they're aligned with our strategic plan, we have three goals, which are academic excellence, students' safety and wellbeing, as well as equity and access. And we've got great programs within those goals, we've highlighted some of those with, with, um, historic class size reduction, professional development, we've got teachers in special assignment out in our schools, our ed tech, uh, technology, we've got our, our MTSS, our Teachers on Special Assignments helping with our students' wellbeing. We have our registered behavior technicians, social workers and counselors in our safety, athletics, as well as our SROs and security guards, which I know we have recognized throughout this school year. Uh, goal three, we make sure still our students have one-to-one devices. We have our English learner program support, we've expanded our dual-language support, as well as having a foster and homeless dedicated counselor, one for each, and our award-winning Avid program that is elementary through high school level. So doing this, again, we know we took you on a journey through baking before, we're gonna pass it off to Dr. Swelt to continue a little of that journey.
So at the beginning of the year, we really started looking at how our academics are measured with the dashboard. And we compared it to baking, there's a lot of different ingredients that we need in order to make bread. We also need some thyme, it needs to rise, we need to stick it in the oven. And sometimes it's, you know, we want to pull it out because it smells so good, but it's not quite done. And we have to give it a little bit more time. The same thing is true with all the things that we need in order to make students academically successful and safe at school. So, today, we're going to look at the metrics that are actually collected locally. Not the metrics that we collect as, at the state level, but the ones we collect locally. And, uh, these are super essential because they allow us to really see how our community and our staff feel about the implementation of things that are happening. Let me go to the next one. So on the California dashboard, these local indicators actually show up. You'll see the ones that are collected with California state data are the ones in color, and they have the little arrow on them. Those are ones that are collected through different things like CALPads and, and our state assessment system. But our local indicators are also on the dashboard, they're the five things that say standard met on them. We earn standard met simply by adding them to the dashboard. So if we tried to avoid the adding these things to the dashboard, we would not be meeting the standard. But all the things we're gonna talk about today do end up on the dashboard, but in a, kind of a different format, and there's no color. The local indicators also align to California's eight state priorities. You can see the ones that are outlined in black, those are ones that contain ideas that can be measured a little bit by local indicators. Sometimes they're also measured on the dashboard with, um, data collected by the state, but they're, they, sometimes they're a little bit of a hybrid. As we look at our local indicators today, we want to do a couple different things. One is we want to focus on what's going well. But, you know, we want the, the bread to be cooked all the way through. So we are gonna look at things we can do better, or we can continue to improve on. We also wanted to make sure that we made you aware that a lot of our data is collected from our stakeholders, so it is perception data, right? We asked our administrators to fill out a survey, we asked our parents and community members to fill out a survey. We also asked students to fill out a survey. And all those different surveys have gone into making these local indicators. So the first one we want to talk about is priority one, this is basic services and conditions. And, uh, basic services and conditions show up in a couple different places. This first measure, ninety-four point six percent fully credentialed teachers, this shows up, up actually on Data Quest, which is publicly facing, um, data collection for the state of California. And this measure, it's called the TAMO, it is very delayed. You can see it's twenty-twenty-three data, we are not even close to twenty-twenty-three anymore. We expect twenty-twenty-four to be released in the middle of the summer. We actually expected it a week ago, but it's still not there. Uh, and as soon as it is available, we will make sure you get it. Core materials, we have a hundred percent access to core materials, and how that is measured is by, um, visits every single year. So this, the county office of ed sends people out to specific schools that they have selected. And they check in the first two weeks of school to make sure every student at those schools that they select have access to textbooks, material supplies. And then later in the year, they check to see how the facilities are kept up. We have more Williams visits again this coming year, so every single year we have Williams visits. And right now, we're at a hundred percent access to core materials, which we would hope to stay there. And we also have FIT reports that come in twice a year. We have FIT reports where outside agency will check our schools for, um, the repair of the school. And we right now have ninety-four percent of our facilities in good repair. Priority two is the implementation of state academic standards. So when we take CASP, we measure progress on academic standards. This is implementing those academic standards. So the state wants us to, uh, make sure we're implementing the things they care about, which is English Language Arts, ELD for our English learners, math, science, and history. And the successes that we see here are ELA and math, nice number of fours around there, that means we're in full implementation for professional learning instructional materials, support policies, et cetera. And, um, we are, we are seeing, uh, ELD and science being implemented as well. We could have a little bit of room for growth on that. Uh, however, history, I see a two, that says beginning development for us. That is coming from the fact that we have, uh, not adopted a history textbook in K-six for a while. It is on the roadmap. Um, our unfortunate, um, thing is that in K-six, the same teacher teaches everything. So we can't continually put something new on them and expect them just to keep, keep up all the time. So we're trying to balance it out, so we're not overwhelming one teacher with a whole lot of new things. Also in priority two, we look at implementation of other programs such as CTE, Health, VAPA, World Language. Perception data shows these are fully implemented as well. We saw gains this year on, uh, the perception of listening to the system before we do professional learning and making sure we're supporting the needs of the school site. And, um, we saw, we see, that we still need to focus on physical education standards. This comes back to that K-six teacher does everything thing again, right? They also do PE, so they are busy focusing on math and ELA and history, trying to figure that out, and science. So sometimes PE, we might need a little, little boost on what the PE standards actually look like. So we, that, that might be some room for growth right there. On priority three, this is parent and family engagement. As you can see, the rubric's at the top, so three and higher is implementing these different things. All of the feedback was that we are three or higher on all the statements that the state asks us about. So these statements actually come from the state, and they are, they show up on the dashboard, and we have to assign a number to them from the data we collect. So what we see is that, um, there are trusting, welcoming environments and policies within schools that's, um, implemented and sustainable. And the areas that we would, might want to shore up a little bit would be support for students at home academically. How can students get the help they need? Possible support for families with advocacy and legal rights when they're having some issues. And then, uh, districts supporting the sites as far as how to engage families. When we asked parents and community members, how many were, um, engaged in, is it, in at least one community engagement activity during the year? This year, we saw a gigantic jump, ninety-four percent of our respondents, and we had, hang on, I have it down. Three thousand, three hundred and forty-one respondents to the, to the survey. Ninety-four percent said they were engaged at least once at their school site. So that is very fabulous, we love that. We broke it down into Hispanic families, African-American English learners, because that is what we actually, uh, presented to you last year. So this is the, the data that we see, all of them over ninety percent, so we're happy with that. Priority six, school climate, from the parent's survey. We also looked at how parents feel about whether or not their sites have high expectations for their children, supportive inclusive environments, and whether it's safe. And everything is over seventy-five percent. So, we're, we're, we're okay with that. We're a little more concerned about this. So this is priority six as well, this is the student feedback on priority six stu, school climate. This is the California Healthy Kids Survey, our students take it every year, five, fifth grade, seventh grade, ninth grade, and eleventh. And you can see some trends, right? When we look at connectedness, as you go from the left to the right, it lowers as you get to higher grades, right? Caring adults at school as well, academic motivation, chronically sad, we don't want to see that one going up. It does, right? Feeling safe at school. When you look at the LCAP and you look at the actions in the LCAP, you will see those actions align to this data. Right? We are always trying to align our, our actions to the data. So you will see that we have additional security out of LCAP, SROs, counselors, nurses, school, social workers. We try to engage students in the, in the school by funding athletics, Avid, Puente, CTE programs, APIB, and all that kind of stuff. So when you see those actions in the LCAP, we're looking at this student perception data and saying, we have to do something. And that's why those actions are there. Priority six, class size, I think.
I was gonna talk to that, uh, excited to share, this has been a joint venture with our associations, and we're pleased that moving into the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, we'll be in full implementation of our class size data. Uh, we added this because we wanted to have a metric to see how the perception is on those class sizes. And we've asked, um, our communities, does the class size allow for personal attention for your student? Does it allow for more, um, ability to meet the needs of the students? And is it appropriate for their grade level? We've broken those down by the various grade levels. This is really baseline data, and what it shows us is, right now, the numbers are a little bit lower. And I think part of the perception is, is that this is relatively new for them, and parents may not realize that we have some of the lower class sizes in the county, and we're committed to those K-12. So we hope to see those numbers go up, we've also looked at, um, adding some perception data from our teachers and from our students who are realizing those smaller class sizes as well. So you can see that not so bad in our, uh, lower grades, and I think they've had some lower class sizes for a longer period of time. The numbers in our nine to twelve are a little bit lower in our seven and eight. And again, with the sweeping class size reduction that we've done K-12, um, some of our benefactors are going to be our secondary sites that, um, we've had class size reduction in the primary grades since the early nineties, but this really will go all the way up through our, our high school levels. So we're excited to see that data jump up as well.
And our final priority is priority seven, and that's access to a broad course of study. We, uh, look at a couple different things in this one, in the parent's survey. We ask whether or not, um, parents feel there are quality programs for their child's talents or gifts or needs. And overall, we have about a seventy-five percent say yes, absolutely, English learner a little bit lower. And our special education parents, um, eighty-six percent feel that we're meeting those needs. In the student survey, we asked the students, uh, we gave them a list of LCAP-funded things, and we said, um, hey, do these things help you succeed academically? Seventy-five percent of them said, yeah, they really do. And then the other thing that we use to measure broad cour, course of study is actually CCI, and that's one of those metrics that we see color on the dashboard. And we expect to see those colors showing up in November this year instead of December.
Great job, ladies, thank you so much for that. I, I just want to say how much I appreciate you presenting all of the data and not sugarcoating some of the less than favorable data, because I think it's important for us to know what we need to work on moving forward. I think that's really critical. And I, I agree, I think it's interesting when you mention the class size reduction. When I talk to people, parents, sometimes it, um, they think back to, I'm gonna age myself, but back when I was in school, um, you know, class sizes were a lot smaller. And, um, you know, a lot of parents, I don't think, realize what the, kind of the standard is across the state. And, um, so we are doing great work. But I don't have any questions, if, um, I will open it up to the board for questions or comments.
When did you say full implementation would be?
This coming year, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yeah, so this, this fall, we'll see those, those hard caps in our schools, um, help.
Well, thank you, I will say that, uh, when my, when my kids started school in the late nineties, we were year-round, and those class sizes were twenty to one. And I, and I think that, I think that some parents think, might think that that's the direction we're going. Being in this role, I've been able to understand it better, because now I look at, where would we put them? You know, because thinking back on it, when we were year-round, I mean, the school was open all year long, we were using every single room all of the time. And so now I understand it better, and I can appreciate the efforts that have been made to get those classes smaller. But knowing that twenty to one is probably not where we're gonna be. Thank you.
On the, um, ninety-four point six percent fully credentialed teachers.
Yes.
I know you said we were waiting for the state to release that information, we do not have that information?
We do not, the state releases that, and it usually comes, last year it came out a little bit after our presentation as well. And so we provided the updated information in a board mail out. So unfortunately, they're, they're delayed, and we're, we're reliant on them, because that is exactly what gets printed on the, on the, um, local measures.
And then, um, for the facilities in good repair, what is good repair? What is that?
They come through and they check everything from, um, and I think our facilities could speak a little bit more to what they check, but it is a, it's, it's soup to nuts, the entire, uh, building, and they provide ratings on everything. And so what we're shooting for is good to excellent. Um, and we did have, we did have, uh, three sites at fair. And so that will be a focus, and, and our goal is a hundred percent.
So that's an average district-wide then?
Yes, that is overall of the fifty-three sites.
Okay, thank you.
I would just like to thank the secondary administrators, because I know that, um, the master schedule has been very challenging now with the maximum cap sizes, which is great. But on the flip side, they don't have any wiggle room to try to squeeze that kid in, um, for the class or student. So I would like to thank the administrators for the extra work of having to fit all the puzzle pieces together.
Thank you, ladies. Well done. Okay, and next up, introduction by Dahlia Gattimola for our budget.
Thank you, yes, we have Melissa Elwood here, she'll, um, go ahead and present the twenty-five, twenty-six budget and multi-year projections. And this is before the state adopts the budget. So if anything materially changes, we'll come back in August for a forty-five day budget update as well.
Sounds good. I think that'll be your last time standing right there talking, Melissa.
It might be.
It's exciting.
It is, it is, okay, so up first, we have our legal, legal requirements, which just shows that we have to take action to adopt the budget by June thirtieth of each year. And then within five days, we have to turn that over to our county office of education. Next, we have our assumptions for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget year. We have our local control funding formula with the cost of living adjustment at two point three percent. That's a slight decline from two point four-three from the governor's January proposal. And then we also have our unduplicated pupil percentage at seventy-two percent. So as Dr. Capps mentioned, we have been climbing over the years, but we are leveling out at our, uh, that seventy-two percent for UPP. We also have a projected ADA decline of seven hundred for this upcoming year. And then we have adjustments for our federal, state, and local revenues. We also have our step and column. We also have our step and column advancement for our employees, an adjustment of the PERS employer rate, increases in contracted services and utilities, transportation services increases, and then also the increase in the routine repair maintenance contribution. That's three percent of our unrestricted, our total expenditures. Next, we have our twenty-five, twenty-six projected revenues. And it's comparing our current year, twenty-four, twenty-five estimated actuals to our proposed budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. And you'll see there's a difference of a decrease of twenty-one point seven million. And that's mostly because in the current year, twenty-four, twenty-five, we have some one-time grants and carryovers from the twenty-three, twenty-four year into twenty-four, twenty-five. And so those are not in the twenty-five, twenty-six year. So that's why you see the decrease there. Next, we have our twenty-five, twenty-six expenditures. And again, it's compared to the twenty-four, twenty-five estimated actuals. It is a decrease of ninety-two point three million. And again, that is largely carryovers from twenty-three, twenty-four into twenty-four, twenty-five or one-time expenditures that are in the twenty-four, twenty-five from different one-time grants that are not included in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. The largest of that is forty-five point six million of LCAP carryover from the prior year. And also our arts, music, instructional materials discretionary block grant. And that's another twelve million. In addition to our current budget year, we must also project out our next two out-years, twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-seven, twenty-eight. The COLA for twenty-six, twenty-seven is projected currently at three point zero two percent. And twenty-seven, twenty-eight is projected at three point four two percent. And again, we're maintaining that unduplicated pupil percentage of seventy-two percent and a decline of seven hundred ADA per year. Those are estimates as of right now. And as we progress through the year and we get the actual figures, we will update at our first and second interims. Next, in the two out-years, we also have, we continue the step and column advancement for our employees, the PERS adjustment rate, increase in utilities and contracted services, transportation and the routine repair maintenance contribution. Next, we have our multi-year budget summary projections. So that first column lists the the twenty-four, twenty-five estimated actuals. The next column is our projected budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. And then the two out-years. The white line in the middle is our ending fund balance for all the years. And then the lines underneath there are the components that make up that fund balance. And that very last line there is our required two percent reserve for economic uncertainties. And you see that we will meet that requirement for all years. Next, we have our committed funds that are in the general fund. We have instructional materials at nine million. The major routine maintenance physical infrastructure is at six point four million. And that's made up of the next several rows. The first line item, security, fencing, cameras, doors and other phase one, you'll see it's at zero. At second interim, it was higher than that. But that's because we have taken the funds out of the fund balance and moved it up into the expenditure budget because they're spending on that this year. We have phase two at two point four million. And then classroom furniture is at zero because it has been moved into the expenditure budget. And we anticipate those to be completely spent out this current year, twenty-four, twenty-five. We have our summer maintenance projects at three point five million and the fleet vehicle needs at point five million. And then we also have our technology, equipment, infrastructure, replacement and repair at nine million for a total of committed funds in the general fund of twenty-four point four million. Next, we have our committed funds in our capital outlay reserve fund. We have Envision at thirty-one point three million. The Rainy Gym is at one million. The Auburndale Gym, point six. The district office space planning at zero. And then our two future school sites at point five six each for a total committed funds of thirty-four million. And so again, as the expenditures are happening, we bring the funds out of the fund balance and move into the expenditure budget to spend on those items. Next, we have our other funds. We have adult education, cafeteria. The next four are our various facilities funds, the building fund, the capital facilities fund, state school facilities fund and the capital outlay reserve fund. And the last one on there is our self-insurance fund. And you'll see at the right, projected fund balance for all of those are positive in the upcoming year. And later on in the agenda, on the consent items, we will ask for approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six projected budget and with a positive certification. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Fantastic job. Once again, thank you so much. I don't have any questions, but I'll open it up to the board if they do.
Hello, thank you. The adjustment of employee PERS rate is up or down?
This is.
Employer PERS rate.
The employer PERS rate this year. It is down slightly. I believe it is twenty, I don't have it on me, sorry. I think it was twenty-six point eight percent this upcoming year.
It was down, down slightly, that's good. And then two percent reserves, that's 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 the state mandated minimum, correct?
Correct, for our ADA size, that's how much is required for us.
Are there other districts or is it normal to increase that to a certain amount? Or can that be done? Just two percent is so low.
That can be done by board action if the board determined to increase it. We couldn't go below two percent. Some districts do, some districts just reserve it in an assigned fund versus the line item, the reserve for economic uncertainties.
So it could be increased?
It could be increased.
With board action? Okay, thank you.
On the projected ADA decline seven hundred, what is that putting us at?
It is just under forty-seven thousand for the out-years.
What is ADA? I mean, per student, I'm sorry.
ADA is the average daily attendance.
The amount, like how much is it right now?
Our current ADA is forty-six, or no, the estimated for twenty-five, twenty-six, with that seven hundred reduction is forty-six thousand, one hundred fifty-seven. Oh, the dollar per ADA. It's an an average of about eleven thousand because there's a different rate per grade span.
Okay.
So what is this going to do to our title funding, anything?
There's talk of, in the federal government, of cutting title funding, but not Title I, which is our largest piece of title funding. But the federal budget year is on a different cycle from us. Their year is from October through September. And so after we approve the budget and after we close out our year is when we will find out whether or not there are cuts with the the federal budget. But we're in talks right now to game plan and determine what that might look like and how we can mitigate that.
So we have a good reserve for our Title I?
We do currently have enough for the next upcoming year. But again, we'll definitely take, we're having discussions and talking about different things that we might do to mitigate if there are cuts.
I just, I just see a huge need because our schools are, we need that money. And I mean, I don't know what else we can do besides get on a plane and go to Sacramento, but. Washington, we'll start in Sacramento and then we'll go to Washington. But I mean, that money is so needed. And we've been, I know, we've been talking to our legislators. And I just met with our assemblywoman a couple of weeks ago through RCOE, well, through our Region Eighteen School Board. And we were telling her how, you know, we need to keep the money that we have because especially in Corona Narco, our schools really are in need. And I mean, any, any little bit taken away. And I know our reserve could go real quick.
Absolutely.
So, okay.
I I'm concerned too. I know Chris and I were in DC a couple of months ago. And it just, it didn't sound very promising right now.
Okay, at this point in, at this point in our agenda, we invite the public to address the board. Please limit remarks to three minutes or less. Comments will be timed. I remind the audience that this is a public session of the board and not a meeting of the public. Public comment must be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Although the board will not respond to speakers directly either during public comment or after the meeting, staff members may contact speakers or follow up with written communication. If multiple speakers address the same subject, I may request that subsequent speakers only add new information. The time limit for a given topic is twenty minutes regardless of the number of speakers. If a speaker wishes to be heard on more than three topics, the speaker will be allowed up to a total of ten minutes to address all desired items. Persons who have complaints against employees of the district are encouraged to seek resolution of those complaints by utilizing the district's written complaint procedures rather than orally addressing them at a meeting. Please refrain from applauding after each speaker. Public comment is now open. And I ask Ms. Diana Minor to the podium.
Thank you for your time. Unfortunately, we were unable to attend the meeting, the last meeting with a wave of pink shirts. We happened to be out of the country, so we still wanted to come and voice our opinion and share our story. So we have two children who attended Roosevelt High School. My my son, our son Darian, he started his journey in the, in a freshman year on the track team. He is a sprinter. And he was subject to the mental and the physical abuse by Coach Shauna at that time. He was, like I said, a sprinter. She was more into getting points for the team versus the care and well-being of the students. So Darian was not a, he did only the sprints. She forced him to do a long jump at a meet so she could get points. He had never been trained, he didn't know how to long jump. But he had no choice because the ultimatum was you jump or you don't run at all. So he did. He felt something didn't work out. His next run, he got halfway around the track, collapsed. They had to cart him off and that was the end of his career, his season. And basically the end of his career because he never healed from that. He also wanted to attend colleges. And we asked Shauna for help, never got it. So we had to do that on our own. So that was his journey. Come two years later, my daughter's journey. She went through a lot of mental and physical abuse as a, as a result of Coach Shauna. At one particular meet, deep in Orange County, she ran first place. And at the end of the meet, she came to the car in hysterics. I couldn't even understand what she was saying. What she ended up telling me is that Coach Shauna was upset with her because she didn't run fast enough. But she got first place. She was, we wanted to get her additional training to help her career, but we were banned from getting her outside training by Coach Shauna. Again, with our daughter, she's a sprinter, one hundred and two hundred. To get more points, Shauna wanted her and forced her to run the four hundred, which she had not been trained, got out there, she ran it, she did a good job. But that night, we were on the verge of taking her to the emergency because she was in that much pain. She also, she was a very decorated athlete. I have on her her jacket, I'll turn around and show you because I'm I'm cold, so I can't take it off. But she was a very decorated athlete at Roosevelt. She also got letters, she was told that she had letters of interest from other institutions between six and eight that she never got. They were never given to her. She asked about them, nothing. She endured both physical and mental abuse that carried forward with her in her college career. And we saw that, so we had to get her help to move forward. One particular incident, when we tried to get her outside help, she was called out of her name by several students. We met with Coach, with Mr. Shires two to three times to no avail, threatening behavior.
The time has expired.
Okay, can I just, I'm going to finish up, I'm wrapping up, let me just close. We understand that the investigation has been completed. The allegations against Ms. Shauna have been substantiated, but yet there's been no action. So our thing is, what if, God forbid, the worst-case scenario, a child cannot endure or sustain the mental and physical abuse by Coach Shauna and ends up taking their life? It happens all the time. We hear it.
Thank you so much.
Board, cabinet, superintendents, Madam President, outgoing superintendent, incoming superintendent. Need I say anymore before something has to be done? Thank you.
Thank you. Moving into our employee association reports, CNTA, Ms. Meg Yamato. Welcome to the podium.
Good evening, President Nicola, board members, cabinet and our educational community. As we close this year with the final school board meeting of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, I am filled with hope. As was mentioned earlier, this is Dr. Bonrostro's final meeting. But the work he started over these last few years, his legacy will continue through all of us. A legacy focused on quality, not quantity. He recognized that educators that are asked to chase every educational squirrel can never possibly do it all without sacrificing their own health, time with family or ability to truly reach every student. A legacy that builds on, believes in authentic and accountable leadership. I keep joking with Mr. Gonzalez that y'all need to stop stealing our best reps to go into the administration, but that isn't accidental because Dr. Bonrostro empowers leaders to trust our members to be the amazing professionals that they are. He encourages administration to problem solve with and elevate the voices of our reps as leaders on their sites. A legacy that believes in a systems approach. Before Dr. Bonrostro, we were up for two Brod Awards, but each time we did not win the prize because they said we were a system of schools rather than a school system. Truer words have never been said and our members were drowning in that chaos until Dr. Bonrostro began to move us towards systems. A legacy that truly values the voices of the educator in the classroom, students and real, authentic parent engagement. The reason I am hopeful is because this legacy will not leave with them. I guess that's kind of the definition of legacy. But I know Dahlia Gadamala, this cabinet, under the leadership of this board, will continue this great work as we move into the twenty-five, twenty-six school year and on. And don't worry, Dr. Bonrostro, if they start to stray away from your legacy, we will be there to help them remember. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg. I don't think we have anybody here from CSCA. Okay, moving on. Are you ready? Our final, Dr. B, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Couple of announcements, AI Base Camp. I'm excited to share the resounding success of our very first AI, artificial intelligence base camp, held at the STEM Academy on June ninth. This event brought together the spirit of innovation, exploration and learning with nearly four hundred attendees from across our district and community, that would be teachers. The feedback was tremendous, also administrators. The feedback was tremendous. Many participants, participants called it one of the very best professional learning opportunities our district has ever hosted and praised the timelines and the relevance of the sessions. We were especially delighted to be served by the Orange Grove Stu- We were especially delighted to be served by the Orange Grove students, the rolling beans, who kept everyone energized with coffee and refreshments. We were also honored to have our friends from Riverside County Office of Education join us. A special thank you goes out to our information technology and educational services teams for their outstanding collaboration in supporting our teachers and integrating technology into the classroom. So thank you, everyone, who made this day a success. Graduations. Congratulations again to the class of 2025. The commencements were filled with heartfelt speeches, joyful celebrations, and a strong sense of accomplishment. Best of luck to our graduates as they prepare to embark on their next chapter. Summer School Extended School Year Program and Summer Boost Programs have begun. That would have been yesterday. We have approximately 700 students in Summer School, nearly 500 students in the Extended Year Program, and over 10,500 students in the Summer Boost Sessions. It takes a complete team effort to pull off the Extension Summer Programs for our students, and I would like to thank all of our staff who helped make this happen for our students. So great job, everyone. Also, I mentioned it earlier, but there's a new recognition for Dr. Boster. So Dr. Boster is being named as an inductee into the California Agriculture Teachers Hall of Fame. Of course, those of us who have known her are not surprised. This huge honor speaks to her legacy in an amazing career in CNUSD and throughout the state of California. Dr. Boster will be inducted next week. And congratulations again, Dr. Boster, for your tremendous award, but also your tremendous career here in CNUSD. Okay, so that concludes my last presentation. Thank you so much.
Where's Dr. Boster receiving this award?
Location.
Yeah. I think I'm going to need to join you for that. I think you need presidential assistance to receive that. I love it. As, you know, obviously, as your Norco trustee, I'm just super extra proud of Dr. Boster, who is not only an Aggie, but a Norco high graduate, I will add. So that's really what makes her extra special here at the district, just so you know. It's the roots. It's the blue blood that she has going through her body. Okay, so moving into our public hearings. Starting with item 9A. The public hearing is now open on the Corona Norco Special Education Local Plan area, known as SELPA. The California State Department of Education requires that all SELPAs conduct a public hearing on the 25-26 SELPA-wide Annual Service Delivery Plan and the SELPA-wide Annual Budget Plan prior to final review and adoption by their governing boards. Copies of these plans have been available for public inspection the last 15 days. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education may do so at this time. Seeing as there are none, the public hearing on the 25-26 SELPA-wide Annual Service Delivery Plan and the SELPA-wide Annual Budget Plan is now closed. The board will consider adoption of these plans later in the meeting. And item 9B. The public hearing is now open on 24-25 Resolution Number 114, Grant of Easement, Auburndale Intermediate School. Anyone wishing to address the board on this item may do so now. The public hearing is now closed, and the board will consider adopting Resolution Number 114 later in the evening, in the meeting. Moving on now to our board members' reports. Let's start with Ms. Yabara.
Well, I'd like to start off by congratulating Dr. Boster. Thank you, Dr. Boster, for everything you've done. And I've known Dr. Boster for a long, 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 long time, too. I've been here a long time. You're amazing, and I know you're from Norco, but you did go to other schools in my side of town, too, so. Congratulations also on your retirement and to John. Thank you, John, for everything you do, for taking all my calls when I need somebody there right now at this school because there's a broken light bulb or something. You are always there. Thank you. I attended the adult ed graduation along with our board. It's always great to see, and it was a great honor to honor Maria Vazquez from Miguel's Restaurant. That was like so emotional for everybody. Also, I attended Corona High graduation and Rainy and Corona Fundamental Promotions. Thank you, Meg, for your leadership and your reports. Most of the time, they're really funny and good, except for when you yell at us. But today was really good. She hasn't yelled at, shh, don't tell anyone. But again, thank you, Dr. Bonrostro. I don't want to start crying again, but thank you. Muchas gracias por todo lo que ha hecho por nosotros. For us Mexicans that understand Spanish. And Sandy, especially, because I know you are the one. Behind every man, there's a fabulous woman, so thank you.
Okay, so I want to highlight Ramirez Intermediate. Last month, I attended a PTA meeting at Ramirez Intermediate, and I was impressed by the school's welcoming atmosphere. After the meeting, the principal, Dr. Dinesh, offered the parents an impromptu mini tour, which included a visit to the school's garden. Dr. Dinesh explained that the garden started as a PTA program to provide mental health benefits for students. And now the students enjoy, not the fruits of their labor, but the vegetables of their labor. They get to take home kale, broccoli, and celery. For promotions, I attended the promotion ceremony for the eighth-grade students at CFIS. I also attended the high school graduation ceremonies at the Academy of Innovation, as well as Pollard, Centennial, and Santiago High Schools. I was honored to share that moment with so many families. And congratulations again to the class of 2025. I enjoyed AI Base Camp. I learned a lot. I look forward to learning more. And this morning, I helped Corona Norco Council PTA train more than 150 members in preparation for the next school year. So I look forward to those programs that they bring forward for the students and the families in the next academic school year. And to everybody that is moving on into retirement, thank you for just, for all your years here. I've had the opportunity to work with some more than others, Dr. Boster. Enjoyed my time with you at CFIS again, and I just, I wish everybody the best in retirement. Thank you.
All right. Well, it's been a busy time of the year. I had the privilege of going to a few graduations, our adult school graduation, Orange Grove, Centennial, Norco High School, and Roosevelt. So congratulations to all of our graduates. I have all the faith in the world that they will become very successful based off of the base foundation that we have given them here in the district. I was also able to attend Ramirez and River Heights Promotions. Anna and I attended Rondo's Art Walk. Great job, as usual, for the Rondo School of Discovery team that puts that together. Such a cool opportunity for parents to come back and buy and bid on their students' artwork. It's fun, and they bring in the Corona Symphony Orchestra. They call it the Eastville Symphony Orchestra on that day, but it was a great event. So thank you to the team that puts that together. Congratulations to everybody retiring. Dr. Boster, thank you for your years of service. You will be missed. Enjoy scuba diving, because I know you will be doing that. John, thank you for everything that you've done. It's been a pleasure working with you, and enjoy retirement. Sam, you already know you're going to be missed. We'll miss you up here. We'll miss, we'll miss. I'm sure you're going to miss the late calls, the calls on the weekend, the early morning calls, the texts, the emails. But on that note, thank you for always being available. Thank you for the tremendous amount of time taken away from your family throughout these years because you were always there. You always answered my phone. You always responded right away, and I appreciate it. Thank you. Your legacy, you've left your legacy here with the district, and so thank you. That's all I have. Everybody who's going on summer break, enjoy summer break. And those sites that are still open throughout summer, you're almost there. You've almost completed the school year, so keep at it.
Not much since the last meeting. Had some amazing graduations that I was able to attend. Each one was different and so special in its way. They, all of them reflected the school culture and the administration and the students there, so I thought they were all just amazing. Congratulations again to everybody that's retiring. You guys are deserved it. This is what you've been working your whole life to get to, is to enjoy retirement. I'm especially going to miss John. We go way back from GG. And it's nice to see him smile now that he sees the light at the end of the tunnel. And Sam, once again, I feel like there's very few superintendents that people constantly bring up and refer to. And you are going to be one of those. That when Sam was here, Dr. B, or Dr. Bonrostro, I feel from years and years down the road, people are going to be saying that.
Okay. I wanted to also mention the AI Base Camp, which I know Ben Odepo is not here. But shout out to Ben and his team, and Ken Shelton, who just really did a phenomenal job at the AI Base Camp. I really, really enjoyed it. I was in sessions alongside principals, teachers, administrators. It was, it was really cool. And I think there's so much unknown around artificial intelligence, but as Ken Shelton discussed in his keynote in the morning, you know, even our spell-checking capabilities is artificial intelligence at work. And it's just a matter of getting our students, you know, future-ready and, you know, helping them to be digital citizens and really pushing the envelope on innovation. And I'm excited. I was really excited. It was really energizing, and I got all bright-eyed and excited with Ben about some ideas that I had for the district in terms of AI moving forward. And I think that made him really excited that I was excited, and so we kind of were feeding off each other's energy. And so I think it's one of those things that a lot of folks are hesitant or uncertain about. And I think that that's why, as educators, it's our job to really bring our students, our staff, you know, and our communities even, along on this journey into utilizing AI in all that we do. I was invited to give a district update at a town hall meeting with Assemblywoman Letitia Castillo last week. I really enjoyed that and getting to talk with some folks about the wonderful things that we're doing in the district, which is never difficult for me to do. I attended some graduations and promotions as well that I really enjoyed, but I really want to spotlight and give thanks to Dr. Kat Wallace and to Dr. Jeremy Goines, who I got to watch have to majorly pivot from an outdoors graduation for Pollard at Santiago High School to an indoors graduation, thanks to thunder, lightning, and rain that was happening. And just watching Dr. Wallace direct not only her team, but even Santiago staff in how to, in the moment, move everything indoors, including students, families, community. And it was just, it was really, it was a sight to watch. I was so impressed with the leadership. And then in just his true servant leadership fashion, Jeremy was carting plants and table covers from down on the field up into the gym. I mean, just the details, you know. It's one of the things I love, love, love about the leadership in this district is that there is no job that is beneath our, even our assistant superintendent. So thank you for leading the charge on that and just staying steady and calm. And I think we all kind of had a good laugh. And I think if I recall, I mean, there were no complaints. I mean, it was just, it was evident that it was just something that had to be done. And it was slightly chaotic, but almost in an exciting way. And it was just really, a really neat thing to witness. And so just kudos to everyone that was there making that happen. And it still turned out to just be a really great graduation for our Pollard students. It was amazing. And lastly, I just want to mention, thanks to Glenn Gonzalez's assistant Sylvia, who he mentioned to us earlier. I wrote this down because I was so impressed that Sylvia, single-handedly, who is our human resources assistant to Glenn, our assistant superintendent of human resources, that she processed 1,165 management applications for just this upcoming school year. And so that's over 1,100 management applications that have crossed her desk. And so, you know, when you hear about in the news and you read about districts that are having to reduce their staff, or they're having to lay off people, or they're having issues with getting candidates for positions, it's just so lovely to know that we do not have that problem here at CNUSD because we are a destination district where people want to come to work. And so we're doing something right, and it starts in HR. So thank you so much to you, Glenn, for your leadership, and to Sylvia for all of the hard work. I know I joke with you now. This is the third time that I've been with you through this season, and it stresses me out thinking about what you're having to do. And you never seem even remotely fazed. You're always just telling me, "It's great." You always tell me what a great day you're having. And you're just, you know, your steady, stable, calm demeanor, I think, is very appreciated with the kind of the chaos that's happening. As a testament to that, are the 22 candidates that we saw in closed session tonight and brought, you know, brought for us. So thank you so much for what you do, and please thank Sylvia for us. We appreciate her and you. And we still have more to go. It was cute that I made it sound like we were done, because we're not. But that was just, that was just for tonight. And I'm sure that number is going to continue to climb. So at this time, we are going to be moving into our consent items. And I already have polled items 15M and 15N on page 23. Those are Dahlias that are getting polled. We will be voting individually on those as action items after the consent items. Do we have any other items that should be highlighted by the board or E-Cab?
Madam President, I'd like to poll item 12G on page 5 to bring back to a future meeting. Thank you.
12G, page 5. Okay, any other items for poll from the board? Okay, what would you like to highlight?
I would like to highlight 13I.
On what page? It's just helpful for everybody else to find it.
Do better.
13I on page 11 or page 12? Or maybe not? 14. We were getting there, Mary. Okay, so highlighting 13I on page 14. Any other highlights?
Yes, I have, I'm looking at the page number now. I have 14A. It, I have 14A, which is, I believe on page, is that 15?
14A is on page 17.
Page 17.
Oh wait, then it was 14. It's 14A on page 17? What is this?
Okay, so 14A on page 17, are those the two, Jamie?
No, sorry, it's not page 17. It's, it's. I think it's, sorry. I did 13I, right? Yeah, 14, okay, 14A. That's on page 17?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so go ahead and start with 13I.
Sorry, and then 15D. And then I think Chris has.
Yeah, I have a pull, I have a highlight as well.
Okay, what page is 15D? Okay, page 21. And then, um, Chris, what do you, what are you highlighting?
I would like to highlight 14D.
Okay.
19.
Page 19. Okay, we'll start with, um, 13I on page 14. Jamie?
13I. Um, I just wanna point out that I really, and think, thank you so much for actually, um, putting and making these novels available to our families and really pushing it out there. Um, I think that this is the first time that we've really tried to get a lot of family engagement, um, for extra novels that we're going to have supplemental novels, so I really appreciate that. It was disappointing, though, to see that not that many people, um, replied to them or, or gave any feedback. So the communities can be quick to come to, to, to give us negative feedback after, if it's already been in place, but we're trying to do our due diligence, and then it's like crickets.
Welcome to the board.
But this is the first time we've ever done this, like, this much. So I'm just throwing it out there to everybody. So anyway, I appreciate it and, and, um, let's continue to do that. And then the next one for 14A is, I have a question about the Rescue Generation Contract. It has some, it's kind of vague language about, it just says that it's gonna go to various school sites and provide one hour assemblies.
Yeah, we, we can answer that. That, um, they actually go and run a full program, which is part of our Tier Three program for our MTSS. And so they may be working with some of our students who fall in the Tier Three category as determined by the sites, uh, based on data, or Tier Two. They run small groups and things like that. Um, one of the, the programs is to run an assembly at, at the beginning for students involved, and so that is one of the, uh, the things that's done with the program, but they do those works, um, at each of the sites. And we, it's actually less than it was last year. We're working with a few different sites, um, and, and leveraging that, but it is with the MTSS Tier Two and Tier Three.
Have we found this program to be beneficial?
Yes. And we can, we can get you some data on that?
Yeah, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, um, it, that, it's all part of our MTSS reports, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then my last, oh yeah, sorry, yes, absolutely.
How many students are, are in these groups at each school? I mean, is it five kids? Is it 50 kids? Is, you know, how many kids? I, I would like a report because that's a lot of money. And I wanna know exactly how many kids and what schools you're going to.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, uh, 15D. Jamie?
The next one, that was about, um, storage units or space, rental space agreement for, from '25 to 2028 for ELOP. What is that, what is, what is that space for?
Do you want me to get that?
Yes.
It's 15D.
D as in David?
It's on page 21.
The lease for us.
And so, uh, a- as you know, our ELOP funds have expanded, and with our Summer Boost Program in particular, our ELOP Program in general, we have run out of space to receive items. And as you think of the numbers you heard earlier of, uh, we have 10,000 different, um, ELOP Summer Boost Seats, we purchase all of the goods for those seats, uh, for, for those, um, students. And so all of the Lego kits, all of the, the enrichment that we do all summer long, we don't have anywhere to put those things a- at this time. And so as the program gets bigger and bigger, we had to actually rent, uh, storage facility where we can house those things, we can build the kits, and then we can get them out to the, the school sites. We also are, as you know, I, uh, we are, uh, building at Auburndale as well, uh, and so that, but even with that building that won't be finished, uh, i- immediately, there are so much goods now that we're, all the cool things we're doing for kids, we do need a place to, to sort, sort that, those goods and keep them.
So is this like a warehouse, or is it like a business?
It is, is like a warehouse facility.
Business building? Off, is, is there office space in, in it?
There are four office, offices inside the warehouse facility.
Bay area, okay.
Yes, yes.
Jeremy, do you have a number of, uh, I know we've talked about pallets. I mean, you had mentioned like, at one point, like 40 pallets or 50?
I, I, I mean, i- it's, it's well beyond 40. Uh, but I was just, an example is just one day, uh, you know, I was visiting the ELOP, uh, facility, and you walk into their offices, and there's boxes stacked throughout the offices around, you know, people's desks. And then they have, um, at Auburndale, they also have containers, storage containers, and they were loading into the storage containers completely full. Uh, and so we really had a, a space issue, which is a great problem to have because, again, all of these are just goods a- and that end up being services for our students.
And Chris, 14D, page 19.
I just wanna say thank you to the City of Corona for partnering with the school district and providing 50% of the cost to the school resource officers. Just truly proving and reemphasizing the fact of how important these school resource officers are in our schools. So thank you to the city, um, for this continued partnership. Uh, it is important to us, and I know we, we, we need the help, so it's, thank you.
All right. Okay, so we are going to move forward, um, with approving the consent items. So I'm gonna look for a motion to approve, uh, the consent items with the exception of items 12G, 15M, and 15N.
Second.
So we have a motion made by Mary Abara, seconded by Chris Rahaga, and we will vote. Motion passes unanimously. So let's move to... Avita, you said a future meeting for 12G, right?
Correct.
Okay. So Dahlia, let's go to 15M.
Yes, so we pulled those from the consent because they need, uh, to be voted on separately as action items, so we need to be able to record the vote on each one. And that's for the CFD Formation 25-1, for a development of homes in the Home Gardens area. So in order to do the formation, we need to be able to vote on each one separately.
Okay, do we have a motion for item M? And I'll second. So Mary made the motion for item 15M, and I seconded. Let's vote. Motion passes. Next up, do I have a motion to approve item 15N? Um, motion made by Jamie Merchant. Do I have it seconded by Chris Rahaga, and we will vote? Motion passes unanimously. And as if we have not gotten enough of our fabulous Glenn Gonzalez's tonight, we are gonna get to hear so much from him. It's just gonna be great. Starting with item, uh, let's see, I know this is K, but I don't even know what number, 15K? 16K. So Board, if you wanna go to page 25, um, we will be making, um, needing to motion out all of these action items, and there's quite a few. So let's get started, Glenn.
Thank you, President Nicola. So, um, this, this time of year, this is, is typical. We're, we're getting set to start the new year. Um, so we do have a, a number of, uh, credential, um, actions we're asking the board to take, um, for, uh, various positions. The first is, um, a recommendation to approve for one of our, um, elementary management immersion teachers while they're continuing to work on their, um, certificate to teach limited English proficient students. Um, it would require, uh, action from the board to do that.
So moved. Let's vote. Motion made by me and Norma and seconded by Chris. Item passes unanimously. Item L.
So, um, 16L, uh, this is in support of our, um, student athletes. Um, this allows, uh, teachers, uh, to teach one period of PE, um, for credit, um, in a competitive sport, um, at our various, uh, schools, at various high schools. So that we would ask that, uh, those, uh, the board take action to approve those credentials.
Do I have a motion? Motion made by Chris, seconded by Mary, and we will vote. Motion passes unanimously. Onto M.
And this authorization, 16M, allows, um, teachers with, uh, the appropriate number of semester units in a, in a subject area to teach outside of their credential area. There's, uh, two at Centennial and one at Corona High School. We'd ask for approval of those.
Motion made by Jamie Merchant. Do I have a second? Second by Anna Curdi Mesa. Let's vote. Motion carries unanimously. Onto N.
So yes, item N. This is, uh, similar to what was just approved at the high school. This is for the intermediate school. Again, um, one teacher, uh, who has the appropriate number of units, uh, in the subject area to teach outside of their credential area. This would be at Citrus Hills.
Do I have a motion? I'll, okay. Motion made by Chris, seconded by Anna, and we will vote. Item N passes unanimously. Item O.
Yes, 16O. So this is a, uh, authorization for a number of, uh, consultants that we, we have providing speech and language services while we continue to recruit for our own. Uh, we do, um, employ through the county, um, some speech and language consultants, and so this, uh, they're all licensed to, to do this work, but this, uh, credential authorization is for them to do it here in our district.
All right, I have a motion by Mary. Do I have a second? Seconded by Chris, and we will vote. Item passes unanimously. P, as in Paul.
Yes, so this is, um, for a number of our TSAs, um, who, uh, can provide professional development with this, this waiver. Uh, it is in the areas of educational technology and math and science. Uh, so there's a total of eight of those. We'd ask you to approve.
Do I have a motion? And I will second. Motion made by Jamie, seconded by me. Let's vote. Motion passes. Q.
So Q is the, uh, initial successor contract, uh, between the Corona Norco Unified School District and the California School Employees Association. So this, uh, approval today would ratify the contract. It was ratified by the membership on Monday, um, and this would be the final action taken to, um, put this, this contract in, into full force.
I just wanna say how pleased I am to see this, um, and, um, and I, and I want to, even though she doesn't like to take credit, I wanna thank Dr. Kathy Lee for all of her hard work in leading the team on this. So I would like to make a motion to approve item Q. Do I, seconded by Mary. Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously. Now, on this, on item R, we are going to be looking at Scenario B as in boy.
That is correct. So this, this, um, was agendized with two possible scenarios, uh, based on the outcome of the contract ratification by CSEA and, and by the board. Since it was approved by both CSEA and the board, um, the board would need to make a motion to, uh, approve Scenario B of this item, uh, which are, which includes the retroactive salary in- increase on the, um, the interim salary schedules.
And I'm pleased to make that motion and, and provide that retroactive salary adjustment in Scenario B.
Second.
Seconded by Chris Rahaga. Let's vote. Motion passes. Onto S.
All right, so S, um, so this, uh, action will, uh, asking the board to approve an amendment to extend the employment contract between the district and the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Service, Jeremy Goines. It does require a readout of the script before action is taken. So pursuant to Government Code 54953 subdivision C3, the Board of Education provides this oral summary of the update of the salary, fringe benefit, and/or term of employment contract recommendation for the following local agency executive, Jeremy Goines. So Jeremy Goines shall be reimbursed for all actual and necessary expenses incurred in the performance of service for the district within the scope of employment and in accordance with Administrative Regulation 3132. The district shall pay, uh, membership fees in various professional organizations. These shall include, but not limited to, annual membership fees for the Association of California School Administrators, American Association of School Administrators, Service Clubs, and such other memberships as may be approved by the governing board. In addition, Jeremy Goines shall be eligible to, to participate in the district's health and welfare benefit plan, medical, dental, and vision offered to certificated management members. The district shall contribute the same amount toward premium costs provided to such members. The board hereby employs the Assistant Superintendent Jeremy Goines for a two-year term commencing July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2027.
I make a motion to, to approve.
Second.
Motion passes unanimously, of course.
All right.
T.
17T. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the amendment to extend.
Dahlia, read it. Go ahead, read it. Dahlia, read it. I, I don't feel like he should read it. It just seems weird. Yeah, you read it. Yeah.
How she does.
Yeah, let's see how she does. She needs a little trial run, anyway.
Oh, boy.
Okay, where am I going?
And, and Dr. B is, is, is not watching or anything, Dahlia.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the amendment to extend the employment contract between the district and Assistant Superintendent of HR Glenn Gonzalez.
I love the teamwork I'm watching.
Pursuant to Government Code 54953 subdivision C3, the Board of Education provides this oral summary update of the salary, fringe benefit, and/or term of employment contract recommendation for the following local agency executive, Glenn Gonzalez. Again? Glenn Gonzalez shall be reimbursed for all actual and necessary expenses incurred in the performance of service for the district within the scope of employment and in accordance with Administrative Regulation 3132. The district shall pay membership fees in various professional organizations. These shall include, but not be limited to, annual membership fees for the Association of California School Administrators, American Association of School Administrators, Service Clubs, and such other memberships as may be approved by the governing board. In addition, Glenn Gonzalez shall be eligible to participate in the district's health and welfare benefit plans, including medical, dental, and vision offered to certificated management members. The district shall contribute the same amount toward premium costs provided to such members. The board hereby employs the Assistant Superintendent for a term of two years commencing July 1 of '25 and ending June 25. and ending June 30th of 2027.
Sort of a good job, Dahlia.
I'm gonna have a job in HR just as a backup.
All right, Jamie makes a motion. Do I have a second? Oh, that was a tie. I'm gonna go with Anna. I'm gonna go with Anna, ladies first. Okay, let's vote. First by Jamie, second by Anna. Motion passes unanimously. All right, Glenn, back to you.
All right.
You got a little break.
Item U. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the amendment to the, to extend the employment contract between the district and Assistant Superintendent Information Technology, Ben O'Deppo. Pursuant to Government Code 54953 subdivision C3, the Board of Education provides this oral summary of the update of the salary, fringe benefits, and/or term of employment contract recommendation for the following local agency executive, Benjamin O'Deppo. Benjamin O'Deppo shall be reimbursed for all actual and necessary expenses incurred in the performance of service for the district within the scope of employment and in accordance with Administrative Regulation 3132. The district shall pay membership fees in various professional organizations. These shall include, but not be limited to, annual membership fees of the Association of California School Administrators, American Association of School Administrators, service clubs, and such other memberships as may be approved by the governing board. In addition, Ben O'Deppo shall be eligible to participate in the district's health and welfare benefit plans, medical, dental, and vision offered to certificated management members. The district shall contribute the same amount toward premium costs provided to such members. The board hereby employs the Assistant Superintendent for a term of two years commencing July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2027.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve? I'll second. Motion made by Anna, seconded by me. Let's vote. Motion carries unanimously. They're tired of listening to us, they're vacuuming.
Two more. Item V. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the amendment to extend the employment contract between the district and the Chief of Communications Executive Services, Avita Tapia. Pursuant to Government Code 54953 subdivision C3, the Board of Education provides this oral summary of the update of the salary, fringe benefits, and/or term of employment contract recommendation for the follow, following local agency executive, Avita Tapia. Avita Tapia shall be reimbursed for all actual and necessary expenses incurred in the performance of service for the district within the scope of employment and in accordance with Administrative Regulation 3132. The district shall pay membership fees in various professional organizations. These shall include, but not be limited to, annual membership fees for the Association of California School Administrators, American Association of School Administrators, service clubs, and such other memberships as may be approved by the governing board. In addition, Avita Tapia shall be eligible to participate in the district's health and welfare benefit plans, medical, dental, and vision offered to certificated management members. The district shall contribute the same amount toward premium costs provided to such members. The board hereby employs the Chief of Communications for a term of two years commencing July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2027.
I make a motion to approve. All right, motion made by me, seconded by Anna. Let's vote. Motion carries. Last one.
All right, item W. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the amendment to extend the employment contract between the district and Executive, Executive Director of Development, Executive Services Kathleen Lee. Pursuant to Education Code 54953 subdivision C3, the Board of Education provides this oral summary update of the salary, fringe benefit, and/or term of employment contract recommendation for the following local agency executive, Kathy Lee. Kathy Lee shall be reimbursed for all actual and necessary expenses incurred in the performance of service for the district within the scope of employment and in accordance with Administrative Regulation 3132. The district shall pay membership fees in various professional organizations. These shall include, but not be limited to, annual membership fees for the Association of California School Administrators, American Association of School Administrators, service clubs, and such other memberships as may be approved by the governing board. In addition, Kathy Lee shall be eligible to participate in the district's health and welfare benefit plans, medical, dental, and vision offered to the, to certificated management members. The district shall contribute the same amount toward premium costs provided to such members. The board hereby employs the Executive Director of Development for a term of two years commencing July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2027.
All right, motion made by Anna, seconded by Jamie. Let's vote. Motion carries unanimously. Great job, Glenn, thank you so much. All right, this brings us to the end. We have made it. Another reminder that there will be no meeting in July. Our next meeting will be on August 5th. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Mary, seconded by Anna. Let's vote. I, I do think that that's Anna's loudest anything on the dais. Impressive, Anna. Make sure you guys vote down there to adjourn. All right, motion carries. Meeting adjourned. 9:33 PM.